Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Action County Commission meeting for Tuesday, September third. Want to call the meeting to order. Uh, we do not have any other invocation today, so if you please stand in our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Name one. Approval of the minutes. Um, so Michelle made one change. Under the new business, she just took the paragraph out and put Board of County Commissioners gave direction to Mr. Henderson for a request for information from um local brokerages. So with that change, I would look for a motion to approve uh the minutes from August, Tuesday, August twenty seven, twenty twenty four.
So.
Move and second it, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Michelle comments? Uh, can I carry yours?
Oh, I don't think I have a new day. I can't take them any either.
Okay, I don't. Either, so um okay, on the agenda, we have a purchase order for GIS printer. Purchase order approval.
Hi, uh, so last week we had the discussion to um with the Register of Deeds Office about using the GIS printer upgrade. Um, they agreed to fund fifty percent of the cost with the Register of Deeds tech fund. Um, so that would be six thousand five ninety-five even. And then Polly's not here today to to talk about it, but she was gonna ask the commission for the other half of six thousand five ninety-five to be made with our bucks. Um, beforehand, you guys had already approved five hundred dollars and thirty eight hundred dollars towards the project. So that's total forty-three out of the sixty-five ninety-five.
So sixty-five ninety-five minus the forty-three hundred?
Yeah. So that would be the difference. I don't know if you guys wanna see the documentation with twelve ninety-five or something like that.
So we already have the forty, sorry, what was it?
Yeah, forty-three hundred, it was five hundred dollars towards the appraiser upgrade and then thirty-eight hundred for the GIS upgrade. The five hundred isn't needed. So you could take that five hundred to put it with the thirty-eight that you already approved.
Is that budgeted funds or art line up? So when two weeks ago, when we authorized the three hundred and sixty-five thousand left, you go to the road and bridge.
Lower. Because we don't have anything else.
Does the appraiser have anything left in her budget this year that could cover that? How much was it? Not much, twelve?
Twelve ninety-five.
Twelve ninety-five.
I'm not sure, actually, I got twenty-two ninety-five. In there.
Yep.
Sorry, I just didn't want to get confused. I'm not familiar enough, and if she's not here, I don't wanna speak for her, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Can this, can we wait and talk to her when she gets back? On Tuesday?
Uh, to.
She hasn't in her budget.
Okay, I, sure.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's not an urgency to me, I was asked to take a look into it. We have found these things and and uh I think the old printer must have heard us talking about it. Because now, in the last week, it's come up with about two thousand dollars for the stuff we need to do to it in case, uh, in case this doesn't go through, but and I say that it almost like they have a a personality because here I said, oh, it's been running fine, we're gonna get rid of it. Now it comes back and it wants attention, so. I know that sounds strange, but.
That's.
No.
How is work to say? What happened then? Okay, awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Seltner, Finance Director, Purchase Order Approval, Senior Village Pass Through Fund.
Uh, we received a check that was in signs uh money for nine hundred and seven dollars and forty-one cents. Um, so I proceeded it into the pass-through fund and I would like to pay it out to inside.
For a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our Finance Director for the Senior Village Pass Through Fund in the amount of nine hundred and seven dollars and forty-one cents.
So.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Read the zero.
Thanks, um, with that, we're kinda getting close to the end of doing anything with our billing company that we hired to help us with the whole transition and everything as well, so they did the last revision to the aging report, that's kind of what the account balance is left on each resident account up there. And I sent it to you guys and Pat and we just, Pat and I need to find some time to go through it to see if um each account is pursuable or not, or what the deal is, so um. I don't know if there will be any money to collect, I'm sure there will be, but it's just what to do with that. So. I think some of, most of the accounts on there are private pay. So the family or themselves are responsible for the bill. And billing company does not generate bills for those uh residents. They let the facility do that, and I don't believe the facility has done that for a while, for a little while. Um, especially not since March, when when inside took over. So we would maybe have to drop some letters, or then that's where we turn it over to a a collection agency to do it for us or something like that, so. I don't know if you have anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, there are a few of them that are deceased, even deceased a long time ago, there's one of them died in nineteen, or twenty nineteen. About in nineteen, in twenty nineteen, um, and those are too old for us to pursue. And you say you don't have six months after the date of death to file one estate to collect, so there there are probably half a dozen ish that are not collectible at all. If they're private pay with the person being deceased more than six months.
How many would be collect, possibly collected?
Yeah, um.
Ballpark.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that uh I haven't gone through all of it, there are five or six maybe. That look like they might be collectible and there's.
Which and I wish they would kind of.
Fifty-five or so on this.
Kinda wish that the billing company would just communicate that with us a little bit more to know after the six months, they did pass away, we, there's nothing we can do and we just, they present it to us to just get it off the report, so we don't worry about it, but I don't think that's their they don't wanna get involved in doing that, that's for us to make that determination, so. Just wish it was a little easier.
But every month that goes by, we're, we're going, going over that six-month threshold.
Right.
So if we're gonna be doing it, I think we need to, I mean, we intend on trying to collect it, we need to be acting.
Yeah, there, there's fewer than that, because I'm looking at it, there are some of them that just have a credit on here, and some of those credits are really small, like a thirty-dollar credit. And it's been there for four years.
Should we send that to the Superior State?
So. Well, some of them, it looked like it went to an insurance company and uh yeah, we've really. I, I haven't gone through them with the fine-tooth comb like that. So that's we need to, we need to look at it stronger. Harder.
Instead of us looking through, but we went in with the collection service and them discern which ones are collectible and move forward.
Yeah, I don't have any. I that, that's fine, um, I think if you're gonna do it locally, um that it's uh clearly Andrew Waring, um, yeah, who's.
Here he does that.
I really, yeah, I've done a really good job at that, I think we should go through and get rid of the claims that we know aren't collectible because they're too old. Um.
Get them a cleaner report.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I agree.
That's a, that's, looks like it's about fifteen of them, I think it would be in there.
As far as hippos or anything in here that we'd be cautious about as far as the Andrew, anybody else that will sign off on some documentation on that, I guess.
We already have an agreement that it's you know, account management on it. But I guess there would be concerns about, about it.
Just maybe somebody redacts off the report, I wonder.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have um some quarterly grant budget amendment reports um that I need approval on from our Community Corrections Director. Um, but there'll be three different motions that I'm looking for in this. Um. Okay, so the First Amendment um is for quarterly grant budget amendment report and signatory approval in the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and three cents. And this has to do with Client Services category, um, three thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and nine cents. I don't know if I'm going too fast.
Too fast.
Um, is getting moved over to uh juvenile uh salary and benefits for that amount, and then CMA salary and benefits uh which is non-admin salary in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-four cents, it's being moved over to the J I A S salary and benefits. So do I have a motion to approve that total amendment of twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and three cents as described and allow the chair to sign this?
Yeah, absolutely, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. All right, so I have another pathway for success, quarterly grant budget amendment report and signatory approval for the chair to sign, looking for approval in the amount of thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seven cents. Um. That is moved from J I A S Supplies, six thousand dollars, J I A S Salary and Benefits for fifteen hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-four cents. J I A S Contractual for sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-four cents for on-call intake workers. Agency Ops, six thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and Client Service. Client Incentives, Courtroom, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents, that'll be moved to Admin Salary for Salary and Benefits in the amount of thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seven cents, do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's read the zero. Okay, the final one is pathway for success, quarterly grant budget amendment report and signatory approval for the chair to sign, looking for approval in the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents. Um. That will be moved from J I A S Client Services, five oh six, five hundred and six dollars twenty-two cents to J I A S Supplies, Group Supplies, Agency Ops, Computer Maintenance, three hundred and thirty-two dollars seventy-eight cents to CMA Supplies, Group Supplies, Agency Ops Insurance, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents to J I A S Communications for the Internet. J I A S Equipment, it's a laptop for twelve hundred and nineteen dollars and one cent to CMA Equipment, Office Furniture Computers. J I A S Equipment, Equipment Vehicle, three thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-eight cents to J I A S Equipment, Office Furniture. CMA Client Services, Housing Assistance for eight hundred and eighteen dollars and three cents to J I S P Equipment, Office Furniture and Computer. J I A S Agency Ops, Additional Intake Fund for KDOC in the amount of two thousand two oh six fifty to CMA Supplies, Office Supplies. J I A S Client Services, Additional Intake Fund, K- A D O C. One thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents, Agency Ops Utilities. Sorry, the last one was going to J I A S Supplies, Office Supplies. Agency Ops Utilities, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents to J I S P Supplies, Office Supplies. Agency Ops Utilities, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and three cents to J I A S Travel, Hotel Per Diem. J I S Training, Training for five hundred and thirty-six dollars sixty-one cents to CMA Travel Hotel Per Diem. And the final one is J I A S Training, Training for four hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents to J I S P Travel Hotel Per Diem, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So move. Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 It, and just as a comment, this, this is to clarify, this is all just moving money within their budget to a different account. There's no new money here. Yeah, it's just rearranged, rearranged to make the want to be happy. Yeah. And I thank you, they actually, the changes were originated in bigger.
Yeah.
Rearranged the deck chairs twice now.
Okay, I have two letters we received for the Board of County Commission, one stating that uh we are pleased to inform you, this is from the State Historic Preservation Office, that Mount Vernon Cemetery is listed on the National Register of Historic Places as of July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, so there's that for you. No actions needed, it's just kind of an FYI.
You mean why they did that, was it in their advantage or some grants or something, maybe get some restoration work or?
I'm not.
Says owners of buildings listed on the register may be eligible for a federal rehabilitation tax credit, uh, with tax rates, okay? State rehabilitation credit is also available for the rehabilitation of both income and non-income producing properties listed in the state register of historic places. Uh, national register listing qualifies a property for the Heritage Trust Fund Grant Program. And they, this State Historical Society will offer free technical advice to owners of historic properties to help them maintain their properties in a historically accurate manner, so you gotta answer that.
Okay, then we got another letter from Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and closes public notice regarding proposed Kansas Water Pollution Control permits for agriculture and related wastes and authorization to discharge under the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. Please post a public notice until the expiration date identified in the public notice in accordance with the Kansas Administration Regulation twenty-eight dash sixteen dash sixty-one. Um, Atchison County Owen-Watwa-Watwa Farms, and they have a permit number. Um, and this is for the Missouri River Basin. So it's just information of our county and the permit information. Um, all right. We have unfinished business, anything? Have anything? County Councilor updates?
Uh, I don't have anything today.
Did we hear back anything on the survey or when we could set closing?
No.
Okay.
No, uh, we communicated with uh the, the engineers about it, and they said the same thing, that they said that they would have it done at the end of last week or the beginning of this, but they didn't. Yeah.
Okay. Um, no need for executive sessions, do I have a motion to approve this week's expenses as presented?
So move.
Yep.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, fact is three to zero. All right, so we have um about an hour and ten minutes before our R and R hearing. So. Park, did you have anything else for us, or, okay? So I guess we'll just recess, um, unless someone comes in during our meeting and we can come back on if there's business. But otherwise, we'll be back on at four-thirty for our R and R hearing.
Probably a couple of minutes before, that way you get, be ready to go at four-thirty.
Okay, so I look for um a motion to recess until uh we're ready to come back on for the R and R hearing.
So move, second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, it is four-thirty, um, it is time for the R and R hearing, which is the revenue neutral rate. So I'd look for a motion to open the R and R hearing. Do you have a motion to open?
So move, second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero, our R and R hearing is now open. I have a resolution number. Patrick Flitzard. It should be. Just stand down here. Do you have fifteen forty-four?
I'm not as fast as she is. Yes, thirteen forty-four.
Okay. So a resolution of the County of Atchison, Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Whereas, the revenue neutral rate for the County of Atchison was calculated at forty-nine point two-six-one mils by the Atchison County Finance Director within the Atchison County Clerk's Office. And whereas, the budget proposed by the governing body of the County of Atchison will require the levy of a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And whereas, the governing body held a hearing on September third, twenty twenty-four, allowing all interested taxpayers desiring to be heard an opportunity to give oral testimony. And whereas, the governing body of the County of Atchison, having heard testimony, still finds it necessary to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the County of Atchison, the County of Atchison shall levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of forty-nine point two-six-one mils. This resolution shall take effect and be in a, be in force immediately upon its adoption and shall remain in effect until further action is taken by the governing body. Adopted this third day of September twenty twenty-four and signed by the Atchison County Board of Commissioners. May I ask a question about this resolution? So it states in here that we're giving oral testimony, but at this point, we've already sent out the R and R notice that we're exceeding it, this is just us passing in front of the public that we're.
I think you probably don't adopt it the last day of the year.
Okay. Okay, so clerk.
Vocals.
Yep.
Um, for the governing body members of Atchison County, I have Alan Reavis, Commissioner District Number One.
Sure.
Um, Eric Knoll, Commissioner District Number Two.
Sure.
And Casey Quinn, District Commissioner District Number Three.
Okay, so we will wait.
Hmm, I think your resolution needs to be approved.
Okay.
Before we move on to the
Okay.
The budget.
Right.
So I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution as presented, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen forty-four.
So. Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Michelle, did you just pass the resolution approval?
He just voted on it and passed it.
I'm sorry, guys, the people in back here, you're.
Okay.
Why are we here?
So we're moving on to the budget hearing next, which is where we'll dive into the numbers.
They already acknowledged that they're gonna spend more tax money than they did the year before, we don't really get a choice on that. That's why we're here.
What this does is gives us the if you don't pass this, you can't go at all, so almost every entity in Kansas, there's no, there was this new law, so if nobody passes it, so you at least have that conversation, so it doesn't mean you have to, it means you can, if you need to. So it doesn't, it doesn't really have to, it just means we have the ability to do that.
Do you wanna explain that?
It seems like maybe the discussion should happen before the approval. This whole, I bet nobody in this room approves for the.
Amen.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
Go up.
Amen.
You can open up to discussion.
Yeah, no, I.
Before you close.
I also agree that none of this, this makes sense, but these are the guidelines of the R and R. Um, so can you explain that a little bit by what we're governed by for the R and R notice?
Legislature back, yes.
Us older people don't hear very well, and I am not hearing what you're saying. Can you either have a
No switch.
A way to
You wanna move up here?
Increase how you.
You wanna sit here?
Talk out to us.
I don't know what you're saying.
Jean, can we scoot you up here?
I don't mean to be crabby, but I can be.
Okay, anybody in the back, you guys wanna move up? I think you should move up here. Everybody back there wants to stand over here, feel free to come on up here.
I'll see what I can do here. It's like.
Explain real quick what the R and R is.
Not just people up there, we're here for reasons.
And not in the courtroom.
This is our commission.
Oh, really? Okay.
We have no idea what kind of crowds we're gonna have, and we have to.
My voice will exist.
Where are we meeting?
For them.
Yeah. Okay. So our county clerk's gonna explain the revenue neutral rate. Um.
Anybody else hard at hearing?
Okay.
That's my problem, I hear too well.
Okay, a couple of years ago, the uh Kansas Legislature passed a law that we had to send out revenue neutral rate notices, so that's what everybody received. What that is, is in the budget, everybody turns into the county clerk, we have different entities, the City of Atchison, the County of Atchison, we have cemetery districts, fire districts, we have townships, and they all turn in their budgets to me. Those budgets are put in the computer system with the assessed value that was certified to me back in June. So the revenue neutral rate notices that came out is an estimated notice because in October, I will take the actual certified value from that period, not from June. So there's going to be potentially a change in the value, but what basically we're stating is, in the revenue neutral, is we are not going to collect more taxes this year than we did last year. Tax dollars, we're not gonna overdo more ta, we're not gonna receive more tax dollars than what we did last year. But with the revenue neutral rate needing to be exceeded because there are higher expenses, then the commissioners have to do a hearing for the revenue neutral rate to approve the fact that they need to go over that revenue neutral rate.
I have an idea. Since uh everybody in here is probably in the same boat I am, I mean, I didn't think for a minute when I retired that in the future I'm probably gonna have to sell the second generation farm just to survive because property taxes are eating away every year, learn more. Costs are going up, what I'm doing and what my wife are doing, we're cutting back.
That's right.
Might be a good idea for y'all to think about that.
Yep.
Oh, yes, we are.
I mean, I can't see where our roads are any better.
No.
Roads between Effingham and Valley Falls is like a roller coaster, you can't drink a cup of coffee on that road, you'll have it all over you. They do a chip and seal which just adds to the valleys and dips. Uh, I can't see where any of our entities that we're paying for are getting substantially better compared to the increase in property taxes.
So not only that, you have people that's doing, living on social security, their income's not going up and everything else is going up, and how does the people survive over that?
Well, see, in Missouri.
Really quick. Really quick, we sent out our revenue neutral rate notices of fifty-six point nine four seven mils. So what this is today is an opportunity to hear feedback and to discuss the budget and to learn along with us and and have that die. and to learn along with us and and have that dialogue. We cannot exceed fifty-six point nine four seven, okay? Where we ended up after meeting with all of our department heads and looking at our expenses and plugging in our revenues, we were at sixty-two point four seven four mils. That's where we were. Last year, we were at sixty, hold on, I have it, sixty-one point two four six when we packed the room and discussed this last year. We brought it down by adding six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, sixty-six, six hundred and sixty-six thousand fifty-eight dollars of cash from ARPA to bring those mils down when when we had this discussion last year. So we've certified to you guys that we will not go over fifty-six point nine four seven. However, somewhere in between, we're gonna exceed the revenue neutral rate. So we're gonna go ahead and look for a motion. It was passed, it was voted, seconded. All those in favor say aye. We we didn't because the discussion stopped. So all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. So we're gonna pass that. And then I'm going to look for a motion to close the R and R hearing.
So, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Now I'm gonna look for a motion to open our budget hearing. It is moved, moved, second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Okay, we're opening our budget hearing. This is where our finance director is going to go through the information of where we're at, where the county is at. So you guys can understand what are our revenues, what are our expenses, where we're at. And then we need to continue this dialogue, but I think you'll find this helpful um to understand the situation we're in and how we're trying to keep things down. But that that's gonna, it's running out. Yes, sir.
If I was to refuse to pay my property tax, if I was to refuse to pay my property tax, how long before my property goes up for sale on the county courthouse?
I believe it's three years, isn't it, Pat?
We have a handful of people here that actually read the letter, because we've talked to several people that haven't read the letter, didn't even receive the letter, or they didn't read it, or just didn't pay attention to it. What percentage of the people, not just the people here, the people of Atchison County, whether it's Brown County or Donovan County or Leavenworth County or Johnson County, whatever, if you had a percentage of that county that just didn't pay their property tax for three years in a row, what's that gonna do to the county?
Well, it could do a lot of things to the county. One is an ambulance might not show up when you need one.
Exactly.
I mean, there's a, there's a lot of repercussions.
I totally understand that. There are services that we do need.
Yes.
There are services that my wife and I would like to have, but guess what? Butter a dozen eggs at the Dollar General was five dollars the other day. And our property tax is on our home. What it tells me is nobody needs to touch repairing their home. Just let them just fail. Just let it crumble into the ground. That way there, the value of the property is no more valued.
That doesn't matter.
Okay, we're gonna take, we're gonna take questions and comments at the end. I appreciate that, but we're gonna get going. If you, we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to our finance director, who has put together um a great um piece of information I think you guys will find helpful and kind of walk through the process.
I'm trying to be great.
Who is the gentleman?
You know, I said people had chairs to sit down to. Can we take care of that? Why people standing up?
I found one. The the maintenance room's closed, so we're locked. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. No problem. Okay.
Okay, so I tried to put some stuff together for you guys to just understand how the county workbook that the state provides to us is put together.
You have to speak up, honey.
Yeah.
Yes.
I uh can try, but um so, and I have it up here that you guys can kind of read and follow along too. Um but so where we start with, when we, when I sit with the commission and we get going on the process, is we need to know our revenue first. We need to know what money we're gonna bring in um before property taxes are even calculated. So how, the first step to that is the county clerk submits a budget information sheet to us. Um and that looks like this. This number or these values come from the appraiser's office. Um it's all of the different real estate values, personal property, improvements, oil and gas, those kind of things.
Do you mind if I poke in really quick?
Go ahead.
So one of the things that I've found, and my constituents don't have a good handle on, is when we talk about taxes, they're immediately say, I've lived in this house for thirty years and have done nothing and my tax, like my values are going up. You're absolutely correct. That's mandated by the state that our appraiser has to stay in compliance from ninety to a hundred and ten percent of what's happening on the open market. So when you guys see these signs in the yard, real estate's moving, selling for way more than what you've seen in the past, that affects your values, okay? We're gonna, I'm I'm just
We know. You want us to stop working on our house and make all
I'm just trying to close the gap on some of the questions I've gotten, so sorry.
Uh is it possible to get a printout of this? Because I I really can't see without disturbing somebody.
It's also on that one too, so.
I mean, there's people standing outside.
And I know that. I'm just saying that for, if if you weren't aware, there's another, there's another screen there.
I mean, not now, but we can stop. If everybody's signing in. Yep, we have a sign-in sheet here, so if you guys wanna put your information, we can get you a digital copy, like when we're done. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, I asked that already.
You have, we don't have twenty twenty-five of them because we're not certain.
Here's this presentation.
Yeah.
He's gonna send this presentation to you, okay?
It'll be online, the website, yeah.
Let's let him get through this, this is his basis.
Okay, so we get this sheet from the county clerk. This sheet gets inputted directly into this workbook that the state sends to us. We have to complete all of this by law. So basically, I just go in and put the information that I receive in here. These are all based on formulas um and then it flows to the other tabs. There's thirty-five tabs down here at the bottom um that that all have to be filled out uh one at a time. So we get this section done. Then the next section we move on to is motor vehicle estimates from the county treasurer. So that's motor vehicle, heavy truck, commercial, all of those. Those are figured from the tax system that we currently have. Nothing is hand calculated. It's all, it's all in the tax system that keeps rolling from year to year. So those numbers are from a sheet such as this. So for motor vehicle, these are your different levies that we have, recreational, commercial, rental. Um and then we also have the heavy trucks down here. So those numbers also get plugged into this county workbook slot. So everything's transparent. All the those same numbers get moved over here. Um and that's how the taxes are are um estimated um for any type of revenue in the county treasurer's motor vehicle department. Okay, so then, once we have those, we move on to different types of revenue. So just talking about the general levy, this is the same for all of the different levies, but just for an example, the general one. Um I do a projection of the delinquent taxes that will be collected. There are taxes that are not paid in the current year for whatever reason. Um and so I have projected for twenty twenty-five, we'll we'll take in fifty thousand from delinquent taxes. That could be people paying their taxes from the tax sale um so that they don't go to the tax sale. It could be delinquent taxes on motor vehicle, heavy trucks. Um any, any delinquent tax that has not been paid, I'm estimating that we'll get fifty thousand. It's, I think, a little low. Um you can see the actuals is a little higher in years past, but I don't like to be I don't wanna overestimate that we're gonna get too much and and then not have enough, so I just estimate low. So that number also gets plugged into that county workbook that we received from the state. Once I, once I move on from that piece, then that's when we have a conversation with all of our departments. Um these four departments that are listed up here are the highest income that can be used to offset property taxes. So the highest one is EMS. We're hoping that we can get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our ambulance service. Our ambulance service is not-for-profit. It will run regardless. Um so we send insurance um gets generated. People that just pay without insurance, they get statements. Um the sheriff in jail estimate they get two hundred thousand. And so all of those together will lower the property taxes. So we put those into the county workbook, and I can show you where that is at. It's on our general levy. So um there's EMS, the six hundred, I know it's small. The EMS is six hundred and fifty thousand. Here's all the different motor vehicle numbers. There's like fifty thousand dollars in delinquent tax. And this hundred thousand, along with some other revenue, is generated from it's a combination of registers, register and deeds, sheriff and jail. Sheriff and jail is gonna come in a little bit later. Okay? So, once we do that, we kind of figure out what the commission is comfortable not exceeding. So they signed this notice of intent to not exceed fifty-seven mils. So we cannot go over that number. So when I know that, that kind of leads us into expenses. So we know we're not going over fifty-seven mils. That means our expenses, anything over that, we're gonna have to dial it down to not exceed that number. I wasn't for sure where to place this in the packet, so I can talk about it here. Since it's in revenue, our expenses after meeting with departments was still higher than fifty-seven mils. So the commission decided to use two forms of cash in our reserve fund. They lowered the the ad valorem taxes needed by that three hundred and sixty, almost nine thousand dollar number. There was that money in the reserve fund that they felt comfortable to do that. There's four hundred and ninety thousand dollars that they took from the countywide sales tax, the old fund, not not the newest one, but the old fund um to lower property taxes. That is also in the state workbook under the, under the revenue. Cash from a reserve fund and cash from countywide sales tax. You can also see last year, so this column here is uh twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, and then twenty twenty-three. You can also see last year, if you um were at the last year's meeting, we also used four hundred and eighty-seven from the reserve fund at that time too. So the last piece of revenue is interest that the money we currently have, what that will uh make for us, make for the county. And we also use that interest money to offset the ad valorem property taxes. So there's all the different actuals, but for twenty twenty-four year to date, we've brought in two hundred and seventy-four. We think we're gonna get over three hundred thousand from interest on our bank accounts. So I think in twenty twenty-five, as long as the interest stays how it is now, we have pretty good interest, almost five percent with our bank accounts. So that times the money that we have in there, how much we project to have in there, it's about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. That will lower property taxes. So we're trying to come up with every single way to lower the property taxes possible. Um, once we all plug those in there, it's almost three million dollars that are being lowered from your property taxes. Okay, so then if we move on to expenses, each department is being lowered.
Wouldn't say lowered, I would say you're just
So if you didn't account for this, you would need to come up with three million dollars more to pay.
Property tax.
From property tax. So if we move on to expenses, um each department goes through and fi- tries to figure out um what's gonna take to run their department. Um they visit with the commissioners, and then because we've said that we weren't gonna exceed the fifty-seven uh mil levy, we had to do some reductions. So we visit with each department to try to figure out what they can reduce um without affecting services um too substantially. So that's where we're at now. There are just the three levies now. We have general, extension, council, and not just weed. The other funds that are budgeted, special highway, county dispatch, solid waste, and the opioid opioid um money that we get from the state have to be budgeted, but no property um ad valorem dollars go to those. So this is a summary sheet, and I know it's pretty small to try to fit it all on here. But what this is saying is every department is the top half, and then every appropriation is the bottom half. This column here is what the change is from the twenty twenty-four budget. The twenty twenty-five budget is this one. So it just kind of goes through every department and what their ask is, what the total is per department.
How much the sheriff department want? I can't see.
Do you want me to answer? So it it goes through the summary um. And so it looking at fifteen million dollars for each, for total um for the, for all the levied ad valorem taxes.
And yes. Break down of how much the departments are are willing to sacrifice cutbacks.
Um we did not, we did not go through that. We we had an original, we had an original number.
Um I have that. So, so we set the guidelines before we met with our department heads that we didn't want any increases, like at all. We want bare needs, you come to us with what you need. Um we met with everyone, um and then once the fifty-seven was chosen as the revenue neutral or as the budgetary goal, um road and bridge cut four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars from hard surface roads. IT cut fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars for a project that we accomplished with ARPA and maintenance um cut thirty thousand dollars for also a budgetary, budgeted twenty twenty-four ARPA projects. So that's, that's what was cut.
So who's, who's responsible for the work on the alleys? What is that under?
We'll, we'll answer that when we get to then.
When you're talking rolling bridges and all that, so that's why.
I need to explain to you the city streets and maintenance department versus the county, but we'll talk through that. Absolutely.
Okay, so we get all of the department numbers in there, and then that's when we know we have our expenses minus our revenue to get ad valorem taxes needed. Then at the very end, once all of those are ironed out, then we have the neighborhood revitalization plan that we have to make up for. Those are, and here's some information about NRP. Um it is a revitalization program to help people re-hill, re I guess make their property, make their housing, make it better.
I'm sorry, it's, this is hilarious.
So.
I know there's a lot of frustration. But I know there's, they're trying to put information out.
But I know there's, there's a trend to put information out, so let's try to get through this, because we're gonna be here all night, right? Let's, let's try to keep it going, please.
So based on how much ad valorem taxes is needed, changes how much you need um for the NRP plan. So for twenty twenty five, we need about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars um of rebates that will be abated. And we need to make that up. Um, so all those together, this is, leads us to our hearing um for the R and R and for the budget. So this is just a very quick snapshot of overall the different funds. And then your three levies, um, the general, not just weed and extension cuts. And that gets to what Commissioner Quinn was saying, that fifty six point nine four seven down here at the bottom.
Hey, thank you, Mark. Um, so I just wanna say a few things um as my own. Thoughts on the budgetary process and where we're at and where we're headed um to gain feedback. And then I'd love to hear from the other commissioners as well, but um if anyone's followed along with this costs, I mean, in life, right? Someone said it earlier, you're paying more for everything. That's the same in the county, right? We're, we're buying medical supplies, we're buying equipment, like everything we do, costs have went up as well. Uh, rewind two years ago, um, when this R and R started, right? R and R notices that are confusing everyone, we didn't send them out on time. Um, so we started behind. Um, when prices were going up for inflation, we had to. We gave up four hundred and sixty three thousand, two hundred and ninety three dollars. Because we didn't get our notices sent out, so we were, we were hamstringed back to R and R, okay? So then rewind last year, we sent out what it actually was to notices. People got frustrated, but. We padded it with six hundred and sixty six thousand, fifty eight dollars of ARPA dollars, which run out the end of this year. It's over. There's no more federal funds that are gonna help us offset this, okay? So now we're sitting here for the third year, looking at you guys and everybody's frustrated because taxes are going up. I get it. I, I don't want that to happen either, but my fear is when we still have access to padding it with cash on the. On the backend, eventually that cash is gonna be run, ran, run out, and then you guys are gonna get the actual taxes. Of what it takes to run the county, which is averaging right in that sixty one, sixty two mil levy. And if we keep doing that, we're hurting everybody, right? Because when the cash runs out, who's paying for it? You guys, and it's gonna be even larger, right? So we have two things here, in my opinion. You fund things with sales tax or property tax. And ma'am, I would love to put that on the ballot of. And it, and it could offset EMS, which it doesn't matter if you're on North Second or Three Hundred and Second, you use an ambulance service. It, you know, those are just thoughts, just ideas. I'm throwing them out there to get feedback, because I can tell you. We, we cut five hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars from the budget this year. And we put eight hundred and fifty eight thousand, nine hundred and four dollars of cash. To offset this, and we still have a roomful of folks that are frustrated because things are going up, right?
And we're, we are not responsible for the late filing of the, the notices that didn't get set out in time that you had to take almost a half million dollar hit on.
And neither am I, sir, but.
I didn't say you were.
No, I'm just saying, like, we were all, trust me, I know, we were in a, a predicament of, here's the thing, we could have went ahead and moved forward like it didn't happen. But then we would have been refunding the property taxes back. And, and that costs more too, right? Like.
So when does it level out? I mean, like, if we, like, for, I'm just saying, with, with life it is. People only make so much money.
Yes, ma'am.
And when does it, like, a certain age, for other people. At a certain age, it's non-working anymore, and eighty-year-olds, ninety-year-olds, whoever. I'm just saying, where does it level out to where these people? Do not have to do this increase. They have a certain rate on a certain age where it just. I mean, Missouri does that, but Kansas.
State level, like we, yeah.
I'm just saying that other states are doing it, so I don't get it.
So I guess, I, I just wanna seek feedback that we're in a position where we put that much cash. To keep mills down, and that, that cash is not gonna be there next year.
Which there needs to be some further cuts somewhere, just like.
Can I ask one question?
Making two hundred thousand dollars, they could cut back on their.
Okay.
Well, I'm saying a little better, you know.
Did everybody's property go up the same percentage? Or you just. Certain properties went up a certain percent, the others did. That's what I'm questioning.
So I love that question, and I will get that answer from our appraiser. I knew, I know she was in compliance. Because we got the letter from the state of Kansas that she did everything she was supposed to do to, to pass that compliance test. She's in compliance. But I don't know the answer to your question.
So certain properties are rental, where they're making money on that property. Private homes aren't renting out, so they're not making any money. So I'm asking, how can you have the same per, percentage on all the property, all the homes?
I don't wanna speak out of turn, but based on the classification, the classification's residential, so I don't feel that. Or have any differentiation from single-family home. But again, I will get that answer from, from our appraiser and, and let you guys know, because I.
Cause on the. I understood you correctly earlier, when you were talking about the mill living and the appraisals. Is it, you said the appraisals are based on ninety to a hundred and ten percent? So it's the appraiser's call whether he appraises it at ninety or a hundred and ten percent?
Uh, I think the answer to that is they try to beat. Right on the money, and then when the state comes in and does their assessment of the appraisers. They pull random uh tracks and they need to be within that. So if you tried to say you were gonna be at the ninety one percentile, you're gonna be below, you're gonna be out of compliance. You can't try to skew it to get to the ninety one percent, you're gonna be out of compliance. Because your average is gonna fall probably from eighty to, to one hundred instead of. From ninety to one ten. I mean, there's no way you could skew that figure to, to come out and be in compliance. And then once you're out of compliance, you gotta go back and re uh do those figures and to, and raise them or lower them if they were over.
But if they're just doing a, a random comparison here and there, if my property is. Appraised at a hundred and ten percent, then I'm stuck with that. The mill levy doesn't mean a damn if the property value goes up more and more and more. You steal more money every year out of my pocket.
Yeah. Yeah. On her report, she was right around ninety percent, so she actually kept it right there. You know, if she would have gone a little higher, we would all be paying higher taxes and. That's what you're saying, but actually she did a pretty good job of keeping it as low as she could.
So if your house is falling down, doesn't make any difference, and the guy's got a five hundred dollar home, you're paying the same percent?
Those are good questions for the appraiser. We're talking about the budget today, so.
Information like that. Well, it's a she and she's not.
It kind of goes hand in hand.
Yeah, so we're gonna include this into the packet. She gave us this information that shows year over year. Of appraised and assessed value, new construction, remodeling, renovation, based on all of the classes. So it goes ag, commercial, exempt, farmstead, residential, all of the things. I think this will be helpful for you guys also to see. Because we can see year over year what the totals were. Um, but we will get some information from her and put out there for you, because again, I don't wanna speak out of turn. She's the professional that knows what she's governed by and.
Yeah, I'm not trying to ramrod a meeting here, but since you're talking about budget. Uh, is there anybody here from the sheriff's department? Anybody representing the sheriff's department here? Okay, is the sheriff, does anybody know if the sheriff's department is utilizing all they can in the way of forfeitures? I know there's a huge drug problem here in Ashton County. Whenever there's a drug problem, there's plenty of cash. Did that catch me in confiscating and being used for county budget?
I don't know that answer, but I appreciate.
I mean, I read, I read something every day, Jackson County is making forfeitures and. Uh, they're catching all kinds of people. Of course, they got that seventy five corridor going through there, but we also have fifty nine, which goes up through Missouri. So I can't believe there's no drugs coming through Ashton County.
So we can put a ballot question on to levy a sales tax um for specific needs, which again. We gotta find one that fits all, right? Because road and bridge, for example, and to your point, the city of Atchison takes care of the city streets. They have a streets department. Road and bridge for us take care of everything in the county, so outside of the city limits. And um, so that's the difference there, right? If you're gonna vote for a sales tax. EMS would be a good one, because it doesn't matter where you live, countywide, you're being taken care of.
Okay.
And that could offset your.
County allowed to invest to make money. I've made four grand this month. By sitting on my phone. So the, that, and I would be happy to give it to the county. To see if it's something that we can use to drop our taxes. Because if I can put, make four grand on a grand. In a month's time.
That's great.
Money. I drop our taxes into the dirt.
I don't think that we can do uh certain investments that are not. Because it's public money. Public money has to be secured, so things like interest income. Um, sell bombs, things like that, but we can't enter into um. Like private investments and things like that, because then we would risk all the tax money that we collect. And we would have it into an investment fund, and then it would turn belly up. It, it'd be gone, so it has to be things that secure the initial investment.
Okay, and what if we, the people donated. For those investments specifically, can we do that?
Wow, you're so generous.
Donated for those types of funds and they built lots of revenue, our taxes would go away.
Okay, so I got, we're gonna get some information from, on how the appraiser is, is appraising and in creating reports. Forfeitures of the sheriff's office. I think any other questions, I mean, my big question is, what are we gonna do with that cash? Yes, sir.
All right, so what is the difference between the revenue neutral dollar amount and the amount you ended up with? What's the, what's the dollar figure between revenue neutral? So, last year. What you ended up with?
So I have it. The very first year. When we were doing the budget for twenty twenty three. Because we ended up at fifty one point nine 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 mils and the revenue neutral rate was forty nine point seven seventeen. So that dollar amount was four hundred and sixty three thousand, two hundred and ninety three dollars. Last year. Which puts us over, last year we were at sixty one point two four six mils and the R and R was. Over fourteen point one five three mils. Each mill last year was two hundred and fourteen thousand, seventy three dollars, which put us over three million. Twenty nine thousand, seven seventy five. And this year. We ended up at sixty two point four seven four mils, which was also three million over the R. But the actual, and then we chose fifty seven.
It's two twenty four, so what's the actual dollar amount?
I've got it as one million, four hundred and thirty one thousand, eight eighty two. That was fifteen thousand, or one fifteen million, one thirty nine, seven twenty one. Uh, ad valorem for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty fours was thirteen million, seven hundred and seven, eight twenty nine, which is a ten point four increase.
All right, so real quick. So you've got two figures, you've got revenue neutral, and then you've got the top rate. Where does the top rate on this paper? Fit into where you ended up? What rate is this based on? What mill rate? You see what I'm saying? So you threw a, you threw two fingers at us, revenue neutral, and then the upper end. So where are we gonna be between revenue neutral?
The revenue neutral rate was forty nine, I believe, and we said we wouldn't exceed the fifty seven. And we came in at fifty six point nine four seven is the actual rate that we.
This upper rate is fifty seven. Right, is that what this is? This is based on?
Yeah, if it says revenue to rate, uh, versus actual would be fifty six, nine, forty seven. Maybe I can see what you're talking about.
Yeah, so you have two rates, revenue neutral, and then you've got the high end rate. See that rate versus the revenue neutral? So where am I in between these two when you're, when you end up with?
This would be the fifty seven. This would be the maximum amount at, at, at the fifty seven that you would have ever been requested after we passed that. As a stop.
And you ended up at fifty six. Right, so that gives you an idea.
Yes, sir.
So your middle levy fifty seven. Times whatever our valuation of our property is. Are you, is anybody, is the state of Kansas taking into consideration as interest rates go up? Property values come down.
It should come down.
And I mean, they're, they're stupid right now anyway. I mean, it's, it's insane what a, a hundred thousand dollar property is now worth, two hundred and fifty thousand. No, it's not. But that's what the market is bearing it. Okay, that's fine. When, when Joe over here sells his hundred thousand dollar home for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that guy Bernie buys the two, buys it for two hundred and fifty, yeah, tax it at what he paid for it. But if we build our home for two hundred thousand dollars. And now you've got it appraised at over four hundred thousand dollars, it's still a two hundred thousand dollar home. Why is our taxes? You know, yeah, you brought the, 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 the mill levy is down, but you brought the increase up of the value of the home, so.
It's the cost that, it, it's the cost of the materials.
I build houses. That's what I do. What I'm saying is. You can't change, when I buy a truck for ten thousand dollars, that's what that truck was worth the day I bought that truck. Not twenty years down the road, it's worth a thousand. Why do homes, what it does, when, when you guys increase the taxes, and I know you guys are governed by the state of Kansas. Everybody keeps passing the buck up to the next thing, you know, just like the money coming from, oh, we're, we're, we're not gonna have this money from the federal. That's my money anyway. And your money. And we just keep, you know, this country was founded off of that, getting away from this tax ridiculousness.
Yeah, at, at some point, we're gonna have to figure out what we are gonna have to cut.
And that's now.
Okay, and what would, what's your suggestion? Ambulances? Sheriff's Department, do you wanna cut down officers?
A nonprofit fund, self-funded. I mean, it was self-funded way back in the day for a nonprofit.
What, what, what was funded by a nonprofit?
Anything that is funded as a nonprofit can be funded with a nonprofit, meaning funds that are dedicated for that. We don't, we don't, as taxpayers, shouldn't be funding a nonprofit EMS. They should be making money. Does that make sense? They're supposed to be a nonprofit. That's what you said, a nonprofit.
They would make money for everybody paid.
Exactly.
Problem, so we have a commitment to. Then we have.
We have to.
Can you pull up the list again so we can go through it and we can see? That, that's where we need to start.
My quick question, in the very beginning of the meeting, we voted. That's why the commission passed the motion on the R and R, right? Yes. What, was that approving the increase or just that there was a necessary increase according to the budget?
That we have an ability to have an increase.
So you voted amongst yourselves that you, you've given yourselves the ability.
We need, we need to, we don't have to.
Right.
That's the state, the state started that about three, four years ago, it's a. Are you agreeing with that? Are you agreeing with that?
I do not like the entire.
You guys attend state meeting ever?
Oh, I've been down there, I'll be down there a lot next year.
Well, you're here to represent us and you're supposed to be helping.
Yeah, so so one of my pet peeves when I get down there next year, for those who don't know, I'll be a state rep in January. That R and R thing, that whole thing is a mess and nobody around the entire state. I've been to Kansas County meetings, so have they, where people are just up in arms. It's it's just ridiculous, but the state exempted themselves from that, they can do what they want.
Yeah, yeah.
No, they can't, they cannot.
They can't.
No, they.
That was frustrating.
You need a senator, like congressman.
So yeah, there's a lot to be fixed.
See, we have, we need more senators than congressmen that aren't liberals. So do you want me to tell you about the discretionary appropriations?
Why are we funding? I don't know why we're funding the EMS. I learned, I I'm just.
Because if I call and I don't have any money, they, I guess they still have to come, is that what you're telling?
Yeah.
Has that always been the case?
If I'm pregnant and I don't have insurance, they have to take you.
If only one of us talks, it helps. Well, let us answer the question.
So are are we the only ones in the state of Kansas that fund our EMS?
Oh, no, no, oh, no. Nation lines is how it is.
Some have in-house, so county ran EMS and then others will outsource it to a third party or a company. Um, and cost comparisons and discussions I've had with our department head, um. When we offset the, so for twenty twenty-five. It was two, the twenty twenty-five request is two million one hundred and twenty-six thousand one oh two. And then when you plug in the six hundred fifty thousand estimated revenues. Based on the costs and the service provided versus other counties around us that have outsourced. It made sense to keep it in ha, in county, right? Because we're always having three ambulances, two people stocked, we have one located in Effingham, two in Atchison, we have a fourth one staffed by our department head. And assistant when needed, and I know. Everybody in this community likes to follow the Atchison Police Scanner, and if you're doing that, you know they're busy, right?
Right.
Like sometimes I don't know how we handle, you can see transfer to Mosaic, you know, there's been so many transfers lately from the hospital. I mean, I think you're.
Isn't that what you have health insurance for that?
To your point, though, when you're out talking, do we want county ran or do we want outsourced? From the conversations and what I've learned based on the dollar figures, we're better off to have. Those people right here at home taking care of us and being.
So they they self-build, I mean, do we in-house build the people that use?
Yeah.
And how is the collection rate on that?
I don't know the rate, but you know, we did give the uh, six hundred and, what was it, six eighty?
Six fifty.
Six fifty, uh, I was a commissioner when we still had the uh. The former, way before the county took it back, and we had Tex Inc uh, actually contract with us. We were giving, we were maintaining the space and the ambulances and paying them six hundred and eighty thousand at that time. Just for them to run it. And they got all, they billed and they got all of the income. So that's, that doesn't make sense either, because we had ended up that our. We didn't have control over. The ambulance service at all, I mean, someone else was doing the running, doing the billing. And we were just paying and we had no control over equipment, maintenance, facilities or anything.
Can I ask you a question, who pays for the lifelike, the uh, the helicopter that's out there?
That's not us. No, that's would be their insurance or their private pay.
Well, I know.
Mike, let me add one thing to that too, one thing we do have, I've been real impressed, um. Our our EMS director, uh, he's real, real conscious about costs and everything, so. There, the rescue folks and they're all cross-trained in all these different areas, they do a lot of maintenance, they do a lot to take care of the equipment. They, they're frugal, they don't waste things, um, highly trained, I mean, and keep in mind, we're talking twenty-four hours a day.
I know.
Seven days a week holidays too, we got sheriff deputies, we got EMS, we got rescue people on call, so. And wages have all gone up because they have to or you have turnover, and that's, that's a lot of the increase in this budget is. You don't pay them, you lose them, and we've had to give them back to close to market rates, and so it's, it's not cheap, um.
Hey, guys, I'm, I know we're all fixated on the the EMS and the ambulance and that is one part of all these expenses. Maybe we could focus on some of the other increases and some of the other. Because maybe those are where cuts could be made more than for ambulance and EMS, which everybody's concerned about. That's not saying we have to cut all the services. Keep the ambulance EMS, their increase might be justified. Maybe there are some other things on, there are a lot of, a lot of other ones that are increased, just just about just as much, and then we can.
I have a great suggestion, or at least I think it's great. Why don't we just have a special ballot where all of these appropriations, we just vote on it as a county.
People are dumb and they hell know what.
As as appropriations or not, and if we wanna keep them, that's fine, but we decide.
Let me, let me offer another perspective on that, so you guys are here tonight for an hour or two. We've been sitting through budget workshops for, I don't know how many hours, I'm gonna say a hundred, I don't know, it seems like, it seems like a thousand. We've been through every line item, do you need that pump? Do you have to buy that fuel, where's the best place we can get the rock, you know, I mean, every little micromanage detail. And I got, I was, I helped the city budget thirteen years. And we were always same thing down there, just you're always whittling, you're always trying to carve it down. And there's just, comes to a point where one of the facts of life is. A lot of things were let go for thirty or forty years before we all even got here. Probably about fifteen years ago, that's, I just, to me, they start again, things done. Well, now we're playing catch-up. You know, these roads and bridges, these, it's uh, farm equipment, stuff they drive today. Those bridges weren't built for that, you know, and so now you're trying to, which one do I replace, how do we fix them? I mean, it's, we're behind the curve, well, we really need some bigger tax base. We really need some growth, I mean, that's really what we need, but I mean.
We have to make cuts.
We, we've cut this a lot. And we got, we got to find a middle ground there and it's tough, it's tough to catch up.
And you were still getting, with the entities, you got their budgets. So what's the prospect of these entities? Because we all know that those numbers are padded to begin with, because if they don't pad them. And they have money left over, they, they lose us, so these entities are afraid not to pad these numbers, what's real list?
When you say entities, you mean department?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we've done a lot of things over the past few years to um. To dig in deeper and all of it comes because of our finance director, he's fantastic, he can dig us so far down into these um. That it's very helpful for us to make decisions, so some of the things that we've done to your point of, yes. Rewind three or four years, there was, each department had. Um, like an emergency line item, what if, right? Or um, they were budgeting for seven employees, which, you know, the personal services line is one thing, but then you have your capers and your. All the insurance and all the things that add up to it, so we've taken, like, our health insurance pulled out. And some of those benefits and put them under HR so that we're actually budgeting what we're using, not just. Well, if I hire seven people, I have all this in here, but if I only run a department with four, but I budgeted seven, does that make sense? Like, there's no, there's no extra in there anymore, um, some of the other things that we've done. Um. We're chopping our insurance, we're um, I I mean, everything that's went up, we're, we're doing the things that we do as. As people at home, right, like, when your insurance goes up, well, let's look around, like, don't feel like you're tied to the. The pool because K Camp says so.
Sense of need, but the whole thing is, we, we're, any business owners in here and stuff. And we run a business, but we, we have to budget, we have to stay within our budget. If we go over the budget, we don't have the luxury of raising, raising taxes, you know? You guys need to run this as a business.
Private.
And with catering to certain, extra, extra things we really don't need, and the reality is. If this doesn't work out, all those entities are gonna be even worse shape than they are now, and we're all gonna be in worse shape.
I got a quick question, so. Revenue at the top is a big business in Atchison, what is the county? Or the city, whoever in Atchison do to recruit, bring in? Those, those businesses, is there, is there part of the budget that? That does that, that that hires somebody to go out and look? Or you get on some kind of a search where you look for, because we've got a business park. And I'm just saying, as far as new businesses, what does the county or city do to bring in? Because that would be revenue, right, that would be an increase.
I think that's been mainly left to the city, we have uh, tried to assist them and things that we can uh, assist them with. Uh, the NRP, which is the neighborhood revitalization, that was kind of uh, the way. I've have seen it as a way for both private homes or businesses to utilize that and get a tax break. Until they get that business established, they can apply for that before they start their uh, breaking ground of the. And it's on a graduated scale, and so the first year out, I've, some of them are ninety-five percent of their tax comes back. On, on what they spent or on the, just the portion that they, they build. And then that becomes an incentive for businesses and homes to be built here in the county.
I have seen, we've all seen houses go up at Atchison, you know, you know, those lots that.
Jamie, I might add to that, um, years ago, with the development, what they did was typically. City or a county or wherever, you'd hire uh, your own like lobbyist or whatever you call it, rep, and they would be out looking for you, okay? And over the years, it shifted and now everything goes through the commerce department at the state level. Because everybody wants to keep their powder dry and nobody wants to know that Freddy's is coming or, you know. Uh, Tyson Chicken's gonna build or whatever it may be, so they go through them and and. Sometimes we'll know information, I was on ED down there, we'd get information, company X is looking for these parameters, you guys fit the profile. And then we would kind of vet the broker, we wouldn't know what the company was, you might know, well, they make small manufacturing, or maybe it's a. You know, kind of a general category, uh, but that's how that works, so it's, it's hard for us to go market ourselves now, like. You want to say thirty years ago, now it's pretty much done through the state level, down, which. That's how it is, you know.
Because that's what we're talking about, either cutting or earning more money, right, and that's basically what you have to do, right? And so uh, that was, I, so, so we all need to go to the city meetings, that's what you're saying. And find out what they're doing.
But yeah, I mean.
Bring it in.
But there are forms of, of um, potential growth that have a lot of opposition. Uh, transmission lines, wind farms, solar, uh, solar. There's a lot of opposition, people want us to not allow any of it, and you know, uh. That's the new technology and things, but and when Tyson talked about moving in, a lot of opposition, people didn't want Tyson and so. You know, it's not just a, huh?
Why, when, a hundred fifty miles north of it, it's doing, it's doing, going three gigs, you know?
And the weather was gonna come here with Kentucky, I think, the Conconoxi that went down there. Right.
We can't even get a Kentucky. We can't even get a Kentucky fried chicken in there.
Yeah, we had one, we got away.
Can't get one, because this woman didn't pay her taxes for all those years, and we cannot get a Kentucky fried chicken, I, there's no way in here. Now, that's the craziest thing I I ever heard.
The upcoming projects, let's say to beautify the city down along the river coming up, and it's still how much they're gonna cost.
Not through the county, the county has nothing to do with that.
Are you, are you guys on the city?
It's county, all county.
You can't be both?
No.
Okay.
He used to be on, I was on the city for a while.
The city, the city budget meeting is coming up soon, so I even eye on it.
Another quick question on the revenue side, so the county has excess funds that they have invested in. Whatever, whatever you guys CDs, wherever you got them. That figure, so that, who decides where that money goes? You know what I'm saying, I mean, because this gentleman here was talking about investments, so who decides like? And and it's.
I guess you three, you three decide where they.
Yeah, and I think that's the reason that uh, we used cash to offset some of this, because I know that. Uh, we had quite a discussion on, do we uh, not set this at fifty-seven and and go with the, what, sixty-one? Which would have been even higher, but there was, we had a lot of cash setting in from previous. Old investments, uh, things like that, and it, that's the reason we chose to. Kind of split, split it down the middle, uh, lower the, uh, lower that, but still fund what we could fund. Uh, even though we did cut a lot of the rate of growth, I guess you would say, from the initial uh, requests. To, to what we ended up with, so it was kind of splitting the difference.
And then, like you said, you don't wanna, you can't get too risky with, with uh, taxpayer dollars. So I'd be curious to see what exactly you can uh, invest in possibly to bring in more revenue, I don't know.
You speak to that a little bit, or?
Yeah, so we only um, can invest in money markets or CDs, either with our local bank or the state pool. Um, we have to ask our local bank first, if they're not willing to come up to the rate that the state pool has, then we can go with the state pool. But we are actually exceeding our state pool at the moment.
And also that we didn't have all the funds enrolled in even like overnight uh, investments, so. Uh, all of those funds now that are idle are, most everything is drawing interest, so. Yeah, everything is now, so that's an improvement.
Why haven't we adopted a sales tax? A sales tax, the county sales tax?
What about it?
Why haven't we adopted a sales tax?
We do have a three-quarter cent sales tax. Uh, well, actually, it was a uh, uh, county-city. Uh, collaboration to begin with that was actually poorly written, and so a couple of years ago. Uh, was it two years, was it?
Probably three now.
Three, fall, the general election of, of uh, probably two years ago, before you got, right before you got in. Uh, we took that from a one-cent sales tax that was open for, we could use it for anything. To a dedicated three-quarter cent sales tax here in the county, which is funding the solid waste and joint communications. So that is, we can't spend that, those dollars on anything else, so. Uh, they are dedicated, it's like the quarter cent sales tax that's there for the ball fields that was voted in. Uh, many years ago, which will soon be ending in a couple of years, I think that's gonna sunset. Um, so there is probably room for another quarter cent possibility that could be utilized. Uh, again, I think uh, probably EMS would be a likely target. And and make that like a dedicated, so we couldn't, then we wouldn't have the option to, oh. We said it was gonna be for EMS, but now we're gonna build something else, a swimming pool or something, you know, it would be dedicated for that service only. Yes, that would have to go on the ballot.
No, I mean, currently for EMS, I mean.
We need to do something.
That's an idea, yeah, so, but keep in mind, next year in the legislative session in speaker, the big issue is property tax reduction. And they're sitting on a surplus down there, so that's gonna be a big deal. The sales tax on food goes away entirely.
Right.
So I think there's a couple of things that do help a little bit, but we need to balance the sales tax, the tax burden out between.
We need to help here as the county. We need help back.
There, years ago, there was the. There was the revenue sharing, which was a. The revenue sharing, which was the LAVTR tax, and uh, the state, I believe, got into a bind and uh. They decided to keep the money, it was all meant to go to counties to offset property tax. They have never released it and now, and they voted to do away with it, so money that used to be generated statewide. That was an assistance is no longer there, so that's nothing we can control, that's at the state level.
Against the law, if we voted it in for a specific purpose and the state keeps it.
State of Kansas does what.
Well, I, well, they, that was, the state put it in, the state took it out, yeah.
So what I'm summarizing a little bit here, you're going up ten percent more spending than last year. A million four, seven forty-two. Which is up from forty-nine mils to fifty-seven mils. Is that right?
Fifty-one, fifty-one, fifty-seven roughly.
So you've had a huge appreciation in housing values and you're bumping the mills. So the million four is quite a move, obviously ten percent. Um, inflation's running roughly somewhere two to two point nine this year, it's not running ten percent. Um, there's definitely some cushion in there. And just staying at fifty-seven is not a win, in my opinion, you're spending a million four than you did last year. So you need to get a sharper pencil, you are all representing us, we don't have a vote. And we need to, we need to hear from you guys, because I'm not hearing the expenses talk, I'm hearing revenue, I'm hearing everything else, I'm not hearing any expense talk. And we know that's worth out of control, and there's some things you won't be able to do, but you gotta work really hard to get that ten percent number down. Probably at least a hundred. All of those numbers up there, county general is up twenty-one point eight seven, nineteen fifty, twenty point five two on treasurer, da-da-da-da. There's several big fifteen to twenty percent increases, twenty-two, twenty-three almost. It's a very vague number, you know, you got the name, whoever's responsible for it or whatever. Is there a breakdown of each one of those categories that, that the general public can see? That we can see, why, why is the county general up twenty-one point eight seven percent?
That's actually in that packet, isn't it?
Information systems, they do all of our mapping.
To increase our taxes, they fly over and see what we build on.
No, when you use the county website and you can pull up your parcels and all the information. And they help with road and bridge and the crazy, I mean, they're county-wide.
County general, county general being up. All that health insurance was in every department, and it was all getting padded, so we pulled all the health insurance out, and it's all in county general now. So one reason that looks bigger is it was actually a move from one category to another, so from all those little departments that went over there. So that's one of the reasons that looks higher. Not all the difference, but quite a bit also.
So does the city also use the same appraisal that the county uses? And if so, is that budget divided equally between the city budget and the county budget?
There's only one appraiser county-wide.
It's a county service.
We have nothing to do with their budget or theirs, they're with us, I mean, they, there's, there's.
The same office is used for everyone in Atchison, for Atchison County. Why isn't that budget split between the two industries?
Appraisal and the budget are separate things, so the appraiser is praising properties and then the. Four oh nine, the city, the county, we have to do our budgets.
But I think what she's saying is that the city does.
Within the county, so the county encompasses all of the cities and does the appraisal, like all the property valuation.
Budget-wise, you know, since they don't have an appraiser in their budget. Why isn't this appraiser split down the middle and half of the appraiser's office budget?
That's set by statute, that's set by statute, that's our form of government, that's how every county has got the same thing it is to. For, they have a uh, thing about consistency too statewide, so that one county isn't. Uh, making up their own rules or city that, and they're appraising things differently. They were back in, I believe it was the seventies, when they had the, the whole mix-up of, of how the state decided. That who is, how the appraiser was gonna be set in statute to be the appraiser for everybody. And then how they are regulated and checked by the state, so that's uniform, so one county can't get ahead of. Of, of another, and I remember that was a big blow-up back in the seventies.
They had an appraiser that came out and she checked how many bathrooms you had in your house and all this other stuff. Your house was classic, I mean, I did here fifty-five years in this town. And now they just, you, you bought that, okay, that's what it is, they don't care what's inside, it's falling down or what.
Tax base used to be so much bigger because there was inventory tax.
Yeah.
There was cattle, there was the intangibles tax, there was tax on uh, your machinery. Uh, as a farmer, your cattle, how many cattle you had, they asked if you had a dog.
That's right.
Uh, they, it was, and so as they've cut the uh, different categories down. Now there's either property tax.
Or not.
Or uh, sales tax, uh, or user fees, things like that. But there, the tax base has gotten so narrow now, there's, there's only a couple of places that money can come from.
And we're out of money. Well, you're correctly too, that you got submitted budgets from every division or department.
Yes.
Then you got corrections from them, and three people decreased their amount.
Yes, sir.
So there's twenty-two entities, whatever it is up there, that none of them decreased their amount. They gave their dream list of what they'd love to have.
No.
And they did not.
There, there was corrections and stuff ongoing until, uh, it was three after the rate of fifty-seven was set. So we had actually been gnawing away at the initial figure. Uh, I, we have the maintenance in here four times, and we're chipping away at different things. Um, and not, not to pick on him.
Yeah, yeah, there were, there were a lot of changes for the last round.
Yeah, there was, there's a lot of different things.
I visit the county a lot, and between the upkeep that's done now and the upkeep that was done. Forty, fifty years ago. The great road grader people need to be trained better.
Yes, yes.
Because the road graders fifty years ago knew how to do it. So what they're doing now, it's, it's not anywhere near what it should be. Because if they did it right, there would be less need for them to do their job.
Thank you. So I have a quick question to your point, um, because as a commissioner, I wanna be better, right? And like having these discussions, like it's good for me, because I'm like, okay, you know, checking the boxes and, and to the point of we bring these leaders in. Our county leaders, our department heads are the leaders, right? We bring them in, they're running the department. If you put me in charge of running EMS, like I wouldn't know the first thing, right? Like. So we depend on and trust our leaders, and when we give them guidance of coming in with the needs. No, no increases, right? Like, we wanna know bare-bones needs, and then we sit here and talk about cuts, so. I was actually surprised that our road and bridge director came back with a four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar cut. When we chose fifty-seven mils, right? When it was actually sixty-two. Um, because to me, it was like, my first question was, are constituents gonna feel this, right? Because there's a balance of like, the services we provide, you guys are paying taxes, you wanna see things happening, right? Because it's easier to pay taxes if you see improvements around the county. And so getting that understanding that, yes, there'll still be improvements, people will see things happening, you know, but to your point of. When there's no, when there's no cuts, like as a commissioner. I asked, like, so EMS was a good example, like if I cut your budget five hundred thousand, what does that do? Well, it's easy, it just takes an ambulance off the street, so some people are gonna have to wait, right? And if that's what we wanna do, we can do those things, but like, tho- that, those are the discussions we're having, right? Because you look at your big, big budget, you have sheriff, road and bridge and EMS, like, that's, that's where your, your big ones are. And that's where you're gonna cut, so you're either gonna see. Services go down in those areas, and I, I just don't know without. And I would, I would be, I'd like, I would love for people to look at this and tell me what I'm missing, but we've drilled them, right? And I don't know where else other than just saying, okay, well, we're cutting five hundred thousand, and then we, we deal with that service going down.
But that's the point we're at.
Yeah, hundred percent.
We don't have a choice to, to, other than you guys, all three of you, sitting up here and voting to bump the mill. The option to bump it.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not an option, guys. It's not an option, but you voted yes for the option. That's the first part that really gets me, the second part is, I mean, everybody out here sees the county, we need to be in maintenance mode, not improvement. All the way across the board, everybody has to be, everybody in this room is in maintenance mode, right? And that is where we count on you guys to make sure those department heads are also living, you guys know that. I'm not telling you anything you don't know as far as that goes, but, you know, I had, I, I was talking to Eric last year in the budget meeting, you know. And I brought up the conversation about, and I hate to make road and bridges a scapegoats, but, you know, there's a lot of new equipment down there. There's a lot of other stuff happening, and he says, well, you know, we can't, you know, go out and buy used equipment, yeah, but we don't have to buy new equipment. And you know, some of this stuff that I feel like we're probably being improved for, and it's easy for you guys to sit there and throw your hands up at this whole room and say, where do you want the cuts? We don't know, we don't see anything, all we see is the totals, we're not in, we don't have a hundred hours of budget meetings. Going over all this stuff, but we're the ones footing the bill, you know, and, and that's it, I, we are in maintenance mode at best.
And that's the hard part for me, when we're putting eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of cash to it. To lessen the burden, when the cash isn't there, then what?
We're just faking it.
Yeah, and that's the struggle for me of like, we have to levy what our operations are. And to that point, like if we're cutting operations, we're cutting operations, but we have to levy what our operations are. Because then guess what? When taxes go up, you can say why, and then there's a clear picture. Right now, you can't see that, because we're padding it with cash back here to keep it down, like it needs to.
And I'm not a fan, I mean, nobody wants to pay property taxes, but I'm not a fan of wanting my house to be a depreciating asset either, I mean, I'd rather, it, you know. To that point, I, I mean, I don't wanna go that route, but, but somehow we have to, rather than. Increasing the taxes on that side, the, the bottom line is the cuts that, that may have to be made. But they don't have to be made as long as you guys vote to increase the mill every year.
Shouldn't the department heads be here to answer some of the questions and why their percentage is going up so much?
So Jackson County is doing that this year, um, they were having their budget hearing and having all their department heads lined up in the hallway with a table. So that the public could, could talk to them about that.
Is that an option for us right now to do this in Atchison County?
I mean, yeah, not this year, because we, this is.
You know what I would say though, I think the elected department heads, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know, you guys, you guys hire and fire them, we don't.
Right.
The ones that we hire and fire and appreciate if you go through us, I would put it that way, okay? I mean, that's fair.
I think it'd be better if they were here to answer more questions, why they want the more money and they want the increase, maybe for next one.
I mean, I think it, it's just short-sighted to look, it, it's easy to do as an individual that, I don't want my property taxes to go low. I mean, nobody wants a property tax to go, but why are they, why are they required to do that? And it falls all within all these individual things. And, you know, I, I was, you see a lot out there, and some you don't see. You know, I know there's been improvements to jail, how necessary that is, is that improvement or is that made? And, and we're, we're three years in, right? Three years just in this discussion with the increase of the mill and also padding with cash. And we're still thinking improvement, we're still seeing new equipment, we're still seeing these new things. And we're, uh, our taxes are never even starting going down, no these taxes are ever gonna go down, but you know, we're not trying to find neutral either, I don't think.
What I was talking about earlier, if we could find a way to get our money to make more money. Than what we put into it, then eventually we will not have to pay taxes at all.
The system we're in, I mean, that's.
A way to fund something that, yes, has a little more risk, but we put a little into it and we end up getting a lot out of it. Or we end up risking, you know, it goes away.
I, I back to the thing on like the jail, the improvements, I know that several things have been in the years in, in the making. They had the upgrade for the controllers and things, the original system was shot, it was. Uh, there was a lot of, when they'd have a stool overflow or something, it would get into the wet wall and it would fry the equipment. It was all proprietary, we couldn't replace it, they didn't even make the parts anymore. So it's been years in the making to, to get that, just to maintain it to be a usable. Structure, and then also the original air conditioning unit was uh, now was up for, so that's twenty.
Six years.
Twenty-six years old, had a rated as a twenty-year lifespan, so it's already six. So that's maintenance, just to keep that facility up to par. So there's the things that you see aren't necessarily things that we just dreamed up, it's been, we've been trying to think. Well, there's, there's no way to keep him, uh, prisoners from flushing things that should have never been flushed, so.
There is, if you change who runs the jail.
I just have a quick question, kind of coming back to the uh, part of the budget increase for the county general fund was uh, health insurance premiums. My question is just, where were the premiums previously within the budget?
They were, in each department had their own wide-eyed, uh, for, for their health insurance, and that's where we got.
The courts, appraiser, county council, really all, that was all within there.
Courts state, they're, they're, right?
All of our department, county departments had them in.
And see, and then each one of them, that's what Casey was explaining, that they would have to be able to budget enough. For worst-case scenario in their department, well, that was an extra little padding on each one. So by pulling them into, under the general, and out of them. We could estimate that maybe there would be ten of this worst-case scenario. And instead of maybe fifty that was uh, budgeted for, so we could reduce the amount of uh, spending on healthcare overall. By controlling it, because each department had to uh, cover every worst-case scenario. And that, you know, or they would be over budgeted, so by bringing that in and consolidating that, we got rid of the overlap.
So. Kind of going down the list there, which different departments saw more dramatic, I guess, savings in budgets, since it was moved to the general fund versus theirs? And in fact, correlate into which budgets increased and decreased? Because I still see a lot of the different uh. Well, areas that still have an increase.
Well, this is actually the second year that we've done that, correct?
Oh, I guess then it wouldn't show, that would be from twenty eighteen to twenty-three, not twenty-three to twenty.
Now, so this county general line is primarily K K, property and liability insurance. Remember, we got that fifteen percent increase.
Yeah, yeah.
Our property insurance is what you had. Everything gone up, I mean.
Which we're considering um, changing that from replacement to uh, from.
Reproduction.
Repro- reproduction, which would bring the courthouse burnt down, well, we're not gonna build another courthouse like this, and first it would be impossible. And there would be a certain amount of maybe joy that some of the departments would actually be able to expand. Or, or change things, because when you have a historical building, you're kind of at the mercy of, of the blueprint that's there, that's been. Put in place a hundred years ago, so uh, so now we do the. Uh, not the replace, uh, replacement instead of uh, reproduction. So that will lower our tax burden, or our insurance burden.
We're bringing out to bid, uh, right now, as a matter of fact, uh, we'll be the same place for, what, thirty years, I don't know how long, yeah. So they, they really went up on it, so we're, we're shopping the insurance, I mean. At all the angles, but I'm willing to go and cut some.
And find ways to increase revenue, it's another thing. Did you look into the, the thing I talked about last, that's me now, that, you know, the out-of-state, out-of-counties. Truck truck just tearing up down our roads, and all they're off to other counties and other states, and we're, we're maintaining those. And, and, and most people, example, day on the river road, in ten minutes, there were fourteen rock trucks, being saved. Seven of them were out of state or out of county.
Oh, yeah, I used to walk that, and I don't do it anymore.
I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know how much, how much they should pay, and can, can you tax other, other states and other government entities, you know? I don't know, but it just seems like.
They're all tax exempt.
Yeah, well, that's what I always wondered, you know, is.
Maybe a pole gate down there.
There's some private haulers from out of county that, that come up here though, outside of just the, the district, so. I asked about it at the K C C A meeting, nobody really had the answer, so I'll probably have to go to maybe the revisers or someone at the state to. To know what our options are on that.
But I guess on the other hand, you can't tax those kind of things, or you can, if you tax one, nobody is, nobody's supposed to do that. You know, it's important, Atchison County. I mean, we're, we're, we're probably a county-wise population, pretty, pretty small in some ways. But I look at these other cities, I, I travel all over, and, and just a, a, a couple, and of course, what you see is. You don't know about, but you take like in Brown County, you think about High Water, they've, they've got new industry coming all the time in High Water. And, and, and they attract for jobs, you know, and there's other towns, so what are they doing right that we're not doing?
No, they are.
What is it, you know, and, and I have to give. I have to be biased about this, because I am a farmer, there's a lot of farm-related things, these little towns, that's making them work. I, I have to be biased about this because I am a farmer. There's a lot of farm related things, these little towns that make, that's making them work and they've been. Supporting the farms, the farmers miss supporting that.
Yep.
And this city, for instance, is forgotten about the farmer, but, uh, and they don't care, you know, about, about what we do. So sometimes I guess you don't care about me. I don't care about you. I'll fly past and go someplace else doing shopping, you know? But anyway.
That's something else that, you know, this year crops, beans and corn, they're down. Roughly fifty percent from when they were last year. You know, we don't depend on that for our living, but we do have that for supplemental income. It's gonna be a big chunk. Between what our taxes went up or are going to go up. I've been up here eight years and our taxes have gone up. Our property tax of where we live is not quite. A hundred percent higher than what it was four, uh, eight years ago. And, and I understand, I, I, I understand. I'm self-employed. I understand the budget. But guess what? If I can't make my business work within my budget, I just have to shut off. Or, yeah, I drive a truck with four hundred thousand miles on it. I understand you gotta have equipment to maintain the counties and the roads and all of that. Kind of pointless. Sometimes we watch the road grader just make a mess of things. But what's gonna happen when all of us are just. Don't, we have no more money and we just stop paying you. And I don't mean you, cause you, you are us. You are representing us. If, if everybody just stopped, that all goes away. And yes, we lose EMS. That's a big thing you guys keep talking about. We lose ambulance service. We're gonna lose our farm. Like people over there. Second generation farms, they're gonna lose it because they can't afford to live there anymore. There's no young chi, young kids that can even afford to buy property because property has gotten so ridiculous. To buy a farm to keep a family, you know? Young, young farm kid, they, property, you know, back in the nineties was seven, eight hundred dollars an acre is now. Seven, eight thousand dollars an acre. There's no way they can come out on that. And then because of the increase in the cost of the real estate cost. Then you guys are basing the value of it off of this bill levy and off of what, it, it's just, it's. We're gonna be done. We can't, we, we're not gonna be able to survive. It's gonna shut down.
Doctor Evans, you had a comment that you were willing to go back and look at it and entertain some more cuts as you guys review the budget a little bit more. What's the process for that?
We're just gonna have to sit down and like say sharpen the pencil and figure it out. You know, we're just gonna have to try to do targeted cuts in some areas, maybe do first some things. I mean, just like, just like what you do at home, you know?
We're twenty-five. That what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Because twenty-four is.
Oh, yeah. This is all about, this is all about.
This is all twenty, twenty-five.
So you're, so the, so you're not gonna change the bill levy.
Not the one we're paying now, but the one projected, just still change.
Yeah.
You know, keep in mind one more thing. We've been kind of lucky because we had all this ARPA money, which I know is our money, but.
Tell me what that, is that COVID money? What is that? What is ARPA?
Yeah, so the county got around three million, right? Three point one, the city got like two point two, I think. And.
During the COVID.
It's COVID.
It's all COVID money. So one thing, um, county's done with that, which is good. It's like, for example, the, the jail need all that up, updated stuff, right? And so we paid with that, with a lot of ARPA money. So it's not gonna be your property tax money. Uh, some of the equipment that Road and Bridge has is ARPA money. So these are one-time expenses that were pretty big chunks of money. That at least were not have to be used tax money, so to speak. I know what you mean. Property tax money. I know what it is. I say, I got the same speech. I make the same one. So the point is, I think, keep in mind, we made some major purchases. That's gonna be gone. So, so the good news is some of it got used for good purposes. So we, in purpose for some road work. I can't even everything off. We've got a whole.
Ambulance.
Lot of ambulance stuff. So the equipment's up to date. Things are good. So we can go in maintenance mode for a while. So there, there's some argument there to justify that. So I think that's important to know, but it's also important to know gravy trains over on.
I, I, I don't know that much about it. And I, I do remember it explained to me that. In your tax system with in state or whatever, or it's on a seven-year cycle.
On ag land?
Ag land.
Ag land.
And we, we saw our, our taxes go up, but it, it was a representation of maybe seven years ago, what how things were. And, you know, just like you were saying, you know, our crop, crop prices were almost twice as good last year.
Yeah.
And now this year they're cleared out, revenue. And.
But see.
It's not simple to just say we're gonna do this, uh, on seven years and all that, you know?
Yeah.
Actually. Stand the reality of it, you know?
The system, Nebraska doesn't use that system and they go, they tax ag land. By, uh, just the market value and they are paying much more tax on ag land than we are. And so they're, they're, they're just like your home. If it goes up one year and you're paying it immediately, so.
Value is not the same as actual value, though. It, it ought to be based on what, what it produces and.
Well, that's, that's what it, this, what is, the system we have now is taxed on, uh, production. I think there's a question over here. I'm sorry.
Oh, does, uh, is there still housed federal inmates?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And that's part of the income, the revenue that was expressed.
Part of the revenue stream, two hundred, two hundred thousand or so. That's, that's federal.
Um, you said something about having a whole bunch of money that you're pulling interest off. How much? How much excess money does the county have that's pulling interest anyway?
Well, that's one reason that I was for, uh, using some of that to go bring the, the mill levy down. Because there was a lot of cash there. And so it's, it, we oughtn't to be. Taxing so much and holding on to this cash without utilizing it. And that's the reason that. I think that was a two to one vote that we set that at fifty-seven and not go higher and continue holding on to that cash.
What is the? So, so to answer your question a more directly there, four million roughly in CDs. And based on research I did, which is just what I did, which whatever we count that was, we should be on about two million. So we've got room still. So where I go with that is if next year we're facing the same thing, there's cash to temper this thing. It's like a rainy day fund. This, this, this don't crash in one year, but we, we, we're gonna have to use more cash next year, I'll bet. Or they will, I won't be here, but they're gonna have to do that. And hopefully in another year after that, we'll get things back and inflation will be better and all that. It's been, it's been a wave run right now.
Why do we have that? I mean, where did that come from? I mean, is that part of the, is that part of operating procedure to have?
I don't know how they built that up, but I don't think it's right.
I mean, there's, there's different things. It was the ARPA money that's been sitting there for a couple of years. We actually had possession of it. And it was, uh, creating interest. There's the sale of, uh, the, uh, senior village. That, those funds are there draw, now drawing, uh, money, interest. Um. There was, uh, the sales tax money that had been sitting there that. It's since it was a contentious thing with the city of Asheson. We got so much, they got so much of the, the initial one cent sales tax. We never did use it for anything other than solid waste and joint communication. So any excess funds were held in a fund there. For use in, so, so there was these tranches of money that were earmarked for future use. And they were drawing, uh, drawing interest. So it, it's not a, we don't wanna spend down to zero. That would be a horrible thing to do. Uh, but there is a, a, a rule of thumb, probably a percentage where you should be for a holdover. And then the rest of that is should be gleaned down and, and we were. Heavy on the cash.
So with the new three quarter cent sales tax, um, where does that budget stand as far as. Being able to pay for everything? Is there an excess there? Uh, what is that? What's the status of that?
Right now, we're on, we just talked about that today. It was just, it's, it's about par where we're at. When we actually passed the, we thought that it would start the news on January first. A year ago on January first. Well, gen, we had passed it during the general election. The Kansas Department of Revenue won't enact or, uh, uh, apply your new tax until so many days after the election. So it wouldn't, didn't take place until April first of last year. So we lost out, uh, that changed. Didn't change until April first and we lost out some there. So, well, actually we, we kept with the old system, but we weren't getting. But we weren't getting anything from the city of Asheson. The city of Asheson had stopped paying us anything. So we were only getting. Uh, uh, half cent basically for the last year and a quarter. And we were taking in much less money on from sales tax and we should have been.
What sort of increase in sales tax would it take to cover the spread then? So say we weren't increasing property taxes, what, what, how much of the sales tax would it take to help pad this? Or even help cushion the blow of the cash flow?
Uh, one cent countywide sales tax would bring in about two point.
I think we need a half cent. That'd be about one point two million, million.
Okay.
Because it's, the trader ran the reports for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four based on the quarter cent that's funding the. Ball fields and it's approximately fifty-five thousand a month, so six hundred sixty thousand a year. Um. And we padded with cash eight hundred fifty-eight this year. So, I mean, we're gonna need more than that, but.
So, but that's still not gaining. All that due is taken away or.
Yeah.
Or. It's a new need that, that be impatience, right?
Yeah, it would do that, you know?
Right.
Uh, aren't we, uh, statutory reset? We can only ra, uh, raise that so high?
To do what you're suggesting, we have it be a dedicated sales tax where all the money goes to the county. That is where it's not divided among the cities. You would have to have legislative approval for that and approval by the voter. So we'd have to go through both processes. The Kansas legislature would have to approve it. The governor would have to sign it. It would become a law. And then we could have an election for all of the electors in Asheson County to vote yes or no on it. So, and that would be a.
But isn't there a, a cap on how much?
One percent. There's a, yes, there's a cap of one percent for countywide retailer's sales tax. For general purposes. Uh, there is not a limit on. If the legislature approves something, they can.
Okay.
One percent for counties, two percent cities, but. Some people have heard that about cities being two percent in question.
So what that is a spread that, it spreads out the, the revenue. It takes this, it earns it off of just property owners. And it spreads it out to the, do you guys have a figure as to how many residents are in four and a, or four and a, but it residents in. Ashley County versus property. Is there, do you guys have an idea like what we're talking about?
I, I get that. I'm gonna have it in front of me.
Well, I mean, I. So.
Yeah.
Percent. For everybody versus what we're seeing, what ten percent for, for property of.
College kids, tourists, people passing through and all that. I mean, yeah, it would be a lot. I mean, so it's tax.
Yeah, I mean. We have two high rises downtown. Those are people that are buying groceries and goods.
Right.
And they're not paying with property taxes. So we're bringing a lot of folks in and giving them reduced housing. I'm just saying, I'm not against it, but that's revenue that you're not getting. There's no property tax. From those folks. And I bet there's a big, uh, property. Well, a tax, uh. Right. Abatement or something for that, for that high rise, I would imagine the one on ninth and commercial.
Uh, yeah, they, they're in the tax rebate program and they do get, they do get a reduction, but they, but they are paying taxes. So they will be. I'm not sure what the schedule on that.
I, I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean, you can still pick away at these things, but it's, if you don't have the revenue. I mean, cause we're not, the, the housing in Asheson is not. It's not going up. I mean, it's a little bit here and there, but you're not seeing big housing developments up in Asheson. So that, the, the, uh. Property tax base is coming from the same folks that have been here for the last twenty, thirty, forty years. And so, yeah, the tax, uh, sales tax is a good idea and, and just increasing, uh. Revenue from bringing in businesses. Uh, that would be the other one, but yeah, I agree with the half percent.
You know, I don't support raising taxes at all, but you know, I'd rather see the cuts over, right, have to raise the taxes, but if we can't find that.
We gotta do the cuts, but you gotta balance taxes, I mean.
Right, yeah. You, like you said, the property taxes fall on, you know, the same amount of land over to homeowners or whatever, what have you. There's so many more, you know, whatever little bits missed or something, or something in that. I, I feel like that. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but in my head right now, that seems a lot more even. Than, you know, one of our big challenges here is all the tax exempt properties. If you, if you talk about the college and the sisters and all the schools and. The courthouse, all the government, I mean.
City, county.
It's moth eating. I mean, it's just a, it's, it's, there's a lot.
And then all the five oh one C threes, you know, that all of.
All churches, I mean.
I know we keep talking about cuts. Do you guys have in mind where we would cut on there? I mean, we've been through it. A hundred hours, you know, and it's.
Amazing that. And, and I don't know, you know, like I said, without looking at the line item situation with Joe and what happened at Road and Bridge, but four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Well, what that means is we're not doing some, some of the roads, the hard surface roads are not gonna get done next year. We're gonna do more with gravel.
Also.
Some, you gotta give and take something, it's gotta go.
Dude, does, does everybody feel like they're doing a good job with the hard surface roads? I mean, I don't, not, not for the most part. I like the stuff. So there's the other thing, you know, that.
Everyone's good.
Talking about equipment.
Everyone's good now. We did it right.
Off strike to everything, man, that.
I don't know what it's gonna look like, yeah, yeah. Two miles of it anyway.
But efficiency, I guess, in some of those areas, you know. Certain, you know, a, a place to, to cut or, or to look into, you know, are they operating with what they have, you know, as efficiently as they are too also. And that responsibility also falls on your. Um, leaders or department heads or what have you. You know, it's not just patent budgets. It's not just wasting money, you know, upfront or, or whatever it is, but. It can work. Operationally, you know, how, how are these things run? And I, I don't know who holds them responsible for that. I assume it's you guys, but maybe not ultimately, but in some sort of way.
I know. One last thing. Uh, and it's, I've been, you know, in Asheson for fifty plus years. I can't taxes for, I don't, the better part of, maybe thirty plus years. So we're all, the people that have been here. Were vested in the city, the county and four and nine. I mean, we're literally vested, I mean, tens of thousands of dollars. And, uh, um, so if it takes a sales tax, whatever to spread out the wealth. It has to happen because we had a couple, this gentleman here, I mean, you're, we're at a point where. They're just, there's nothing left and bone to take from the very few. Uh, property tax owners in Asheson, the folks that are just, you know, trying to pay for one house. Yeah, a riff over your head. So I, I. I don't, I think it's a good idea. Something we, I don't know how much it takes. You said, somebody said it's gotta go clear to state. And what does that take? What, who does that? How does that?
I think it's me.
And it would take probably a year.
Well, still, still, I mean.
At, at best case scenario.
That's why.
But as it's proposed right now, we have a year worth of cushion at least still left, right?
Yeah.
So is it time now? Start working one minute?
But, but we shouldn't, we shouldn't be relying on J D cushion.
So this, this will be the year to get the proposal figured out. Then next session, a year from now would be when we get, we get it passed. Which most of the time they pass those. There's usually one big bill that's got, it'll name all these communities and all these taxes and stuff and. Um, they, they do like sunsets, uh, so it's hard to pass something on a sunset. So everyone knows what that means. So it'll be like a ten-year tax and then you have to vote on it again, right? Up or down. Five years or whatever.
That's running out on many ball fields. Who's, what's gonna, who's gonna?
Tax run it out on the ball fields is what's gonna, who's gonna maintain the ball field? Is that a self perpetuating thing? Or?
That's a decision that's gotta be made in the next couple of years.
Yep.
Yeah.
So if you're gonna go for a, for a, uh, a half of whatever sales tax. Or are are you? Save, I don't know how I say it, county for in inflation things, especially just gonna keep going up. So i- isn't gonna hurt anymore to make it three quarters or one? It to to the people, I mean, it's gonna be harder to pass.
Yeah.
If you take a vote on it.
Figure that out, yeah.
A half or or one, but if we're gonna go for it, let's go for it, you know? Let's, let's do it, and and it's not all, it's Atchison County people. I don't be putting that bill because it's everybody comes through town, but it spells up their thing.
Yeah.
Gas. Uh, everything, everything else like you have said.
There's no few counties pass a sales tax for property tax reduction, just in general, it's the reason they pass it, it's worked.
And all sales tax increases have to go through the ballot.
Right.
And to your point, that's a good point because. The budget of EMS would withstand more, right? And the call volumes in June alone, twenty four over twenty three, he had a hundred and twenty more calls. They're on pace for twenty nine hundred just this year, like, it's skyrocketing, the amount year over year of what what they're doing.
What it's down to is the demographic changes here too, I mean, you gotta, there's.
Yep. And their, um, their revenues go to the general, so the dedicated would help.
It is what it is, yeah.
Why just sell it all, one percent would be that much harder, a half or percent.
Right.
We got done, you're already have one opportunity.
Yep.
I'll go come back next year and and that.
They're fully covering it. Totality, that would be fantastic.
Down there, yep. So I, yeah. I don't wanna raise taxes, but I'd like to spread it out, this is my idea, that's, that's a cool idea, but.
But you know, even right now, the the mood is to cut taxes, you know, we've gotten rid of the sales tax on food. You know, it's just, it it just, not, I'm not saying I'm against that, but the. At the state level, thing is to remove and to protect certain classes of people and. Then that's gonna even narrow the tax base even more, so, uh.
And they're sitting on how much COVID to stay.
Oh, I don't know, no, it's still. Big.
Okay.
Huge surplus.
Did they have to spend that by a certain time? Is there?
Well, yeah, right.
Well, I'm just, no, I'm saying.
And I think the concept I'm hearing is we're talking is pretty much could be. Um, use, reduce property taxes and use that surplus to compensate for that as a.
Right, same thing you guys did, then when it runs out.
You're trying to stop doing this, you know, when you just kind of get, that's not used to work years ago. Your prison went up and the mill rate just stayed the same. And just kind of did this for years, it was like every years.
That planning.
Not like that anymore, yeah.
Now, how do we, well, I recommend it further is if we get the citizens to do the payment, to fund, but. Yeah, it's a little more risky, but it generates more income.
Well, the only problem is our policies state that we cannot accept in kind donations, correct? We just had that instance, like.
You would, there would have to be some sort of private foundation or trust that would do that. I'm not sure that somebody in the county could be involved with setting up.
And then if it was ours, we couldn't invest it in those riskier things because it's that law that we can't do that.
Okay. So it has to be an outside organization.
It would have to be a private.
That would fund the cabinet.
Well, that would be great, but.
That would be a virus thing, but. Because I'm expecting a bit of one. We have a percent.
I get a little reason for that, I'm not quite sure.
What's that?
They're gonna have another one of these meetings, a lot of us have things we gotta get on to, but.
Okay. So you're saying when we figure out where we where we are, you want us to have another one?
Yes, I think you need to.
Well, or what if we get it down to five percent or something like that, is everybody doing that, what I mean?
No, going down to sixteen percent of increased, that's increasing from last year.
Okay.
And I understand.
A lot of people are just.
We don't have the option of increasing our budget. You know, on a personal level, we don't have that.
Well, I don't, I I'm staying like.
Every time tax season comes around, it's like. I don't know, like, gonna make it or not, you know?
Yeah, living's too hard.
Take out a loan, pay taxes, doesn't make sense.
No. Any other questions you guys have for us at this moment? Thank you, sincerely, thank you so much for allowing me. No, it's, it's really good to be able to have this dialogue and to be able to walk away with things to look into or get answered, so. Um, I'd like for a motion to close the budget hearing at six twenty five.
So yeah, okay.
Move the second and all those.
Now we have to.
Because.
They don't have to, don't.
I don't know what that.
I put in a thousand dollars.
They did it all the way.
Thirty thousand dollars.
That's awesome.
See you later, Ryan.
So if we can do that in the county's.
You made her.
Taxes work their way. And. And.
Part of government.
Resolution.
I would call you.
Several situations.
Yeah. You're right, Nate.
Well, that's.
Shady.
Or trusty. Who have they do this?
I am trusty.
Yeah.
I mean.
I'm just asking, because after we look at it.
She's gonna write down, I can't even say it, yeah, she's gonna write down for you.
So I would suggest.
Obviously, my stroke.
So for the, for the setting of, you know. Need to brief.
I don't know. Like, I don't know if there's an.
That's not a good business. But.
Yeah.
Then you told people.
You saying that we should have, shouldn't have voted for the resolution? That earlier, we think.
Last year.
Hey, Pat.
And we did it in quarters, how I. We opened the hearing. You voted, you got the resolution. You.
Got pretty fresh.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Mine, they called it. Now I'm. You always gotta do everything.
They would.
How you show.
My stroke.
Your meeting now.
What you say, you're here.
So you're not all where to.
Consider passing.
I go whole.
Suggestion here, I'd be right.
My suggestion is that you should re-vote off the resolution of intent to exceed our. Because the statute requires that you not vote on it, well, after you've heard.
Didn't you tell us that during the meeting?
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Well, and that's what I think the resolution itself said.
It does, that's why I was like.
Because I had, I wasn't a thousand percent positive about it, so during the meeting.
If they say that.
So I would suggest, you know, here, vote that and don't have to approve.
Right.
But you didn't prove that, because if you don't, because then somebody. Technical violation. You're gonna vote it, you have to sue a refund, I for that, I don't want. So I, I apologize, it's my fault for for. For not knowing what the rule was. At the beginning of the.
Well, this is offensive for you.
Yeah, we're in.
Yeah.
I I didn't know for being.
Of all that.
We're still here?
Worked away on.
Okay. Are we being recorded still?
John Brown's farm.
Still recorded?
Hey, guys.
Yeah.
So.
So.
We got on the ferry.
You.
For.
Here we go, we're back online, let's go give a speech.
Are we still here, right? Okay. So, um, the resolution earlier that I read, the resolution number twenty twenty four dash fifteen forty four that we voted on. Um, we were given guidance. From the county counselor that we should not have done that and we should wait till after the hearing. So we're going to call for another vote based on the resolution I read, resolution number twenty twenty four dash fifteen forty four. However, motion to adopt the resolution of the county of Atchison, Kansas to levy property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Is this where we need a roll call or is that, yes?
Oh, no, you don't need a roll call for this, you need a roll call for the budget.
Okay, so.
You don't need the roll.
The motion's.
So.
Second.
Second.
Again.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. There you go, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Sure.
I want to say.
Oh, second.
Okay, moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
It is six thirty.
Mark, I'm sorry.